Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, May 11th at 7:00 in the evening. We will be having two, three committee meetings tonight, followed by a special session of council where we will be reading several ordinances. So we'll begin with the Planning and Development Committee with Chris Fall chairing that committee.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the West Union Cemetery. And the take-home message of this is we, this has to do with the West Union Cemetery on West Union, which is now, right now, not ours, and it will become ours, and we don't have any choice about it becoming part of the city according to the Ohio Revised Code. So we have been meeting with the committee that does the cemetery right now and trying to figure out exactly what we need to do and ways of paying it, and all the other things and where it needs to go. And so by August 1st, is that still our timeline, that the transfer will happen? You have in front of you some of the ORC information and such. And Paula?
Thank you.
We have representatives here tonight to speak to Bill Walker, attorney, and then representatives from the Cemetery Association. The Ohio Attorney General had issued an opinion late last fall that indicated that if a cemetery resided within municipality boundaries, the municipality is obligated to take on the operations. So we've invited them here to speak tonight about where they are, and then our hard work ahead of us is to determine what chapter code, what you want that to look like. I am still doing research. Wellston operates theirs, and they utilize their utility billing office for payments and issues that are related to that. So this is kind of a first phase to bring forward.
Would you like to come up and talk about this, Bill? Mr. Walker?
Thank you.
No, there's no ordinance or anything with it?
My name is Bill Walker, and I represent the Athens Cemetery Association, and I do have one representative, one of the trustees, with me to this evening, Pete Good. There are two other trustees as well. We just lost one other trustee, but also Charlie Hooper is a trustee along with Jerry Jaggers down at Jaggers Funeral Home. Basically, yes, we're asking the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, and I apologize. There we are, 759.08 of the Ohio Revised Code to assume jurisdiction, care, maintenance, and operation of the cemetery. Basically, the cemetery has been run by the association since almost 1864 when it was established. That's about as far back as we can get. And within the last couple of years, it's come, I would say, to the attention, but it's become evident to the trustees that they're no longer going to have the funds necessary to continue to maintain it in the manner in which it has been maintained over all these years. I don't think anyone can dispute that it's been maintained well. They always get compliments for what Pete and the other trustees do for the cemetery. And we started speaking with the city about a year ago with regards to this. And it was a process of going to the county and a couple of other entities to kind of ferret out who exactly, or to which political subdivision the jurisdiction would fall in terms of taking over this cemetery when the Athens Cemetery Association disbands itself or dissolves. They are a nonprofit corporation registered with the state of Ohio, and it's their intentions, once the city assumes control of the cemetery, to turn over its assets to the city, and we're in discussions with the city on how to do that. That encompasses some funds that they have available to them, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to get this thing going about this time, because we do have funds available that we can transfer to the city of Athens. Quite frankly, when we started our discussions with the city, we had probably about a quarter more than we have now. It is spending down. We have approximately $70,000 to $75,000 right now that we can transfer over to the city of Athens, along with the other in-kind assets that we have. So in that regard, we would like to get those funds to you as soon as possible. On the other hand, we also understand the time it's going to take for the city to assume this obligation. And we've spoken with, I guess, this ad hoc committee of how you want to address it. The mayor and Paula have attended, and a couple others have been involved in it. And it looks like we're shooting for around August 1st. Am I correct, Paula? Or has that changed?
It hasn't changed. It depends upon, you know, how rapidly we pull this together in terms of establishing the code and how we'll be working for that.
We were looking, we were hoping to actually have it assumed sooner than that, but again, the logistics and all that have entered into it. Plus, I don't think you wanted to assume it before Memorial Day. The responsibility is to go with that, and so Pete and the association are understanding on that. So anyway, we're just looking forward to working with the city in whatever manner. We have to have some legislation. Paula can probably address that. It needs to be passed, and then we can transfer to the city not only the real estate on which the land is, or of course cemetery is located, but the financial accounts, and then we have a number of assets that we can transfer, the mowers and other personal property and so forth. Basically, that's a nutshell of what the situation is at this point, and I think we've got a lot more discussions to go forward, but that's what we're looking for. We need the legislation to get this thing off the ground.
Right. And Lisa, right now, is working on some model legislation and doing some research along with Paula. And we have been working, looking at it, and we've discovered certain things that we can't do. We can't just have the Streets Department take it over and such. So there is some, several ordinances and such that will need to be passed in order to update our code in order to do this. While?
This would probably, again, it's a larger footprint than our West State Street Cemetery. It is an active, ongoing cemetery, so it's a different mix. There's a records aspect of this, retaining the records that exist for the plots, actually following which plots have been sold that haven't been filled, some of the maintenance in terms of the mausoleum, I think. And so there are things to be worked out. Usually this occurs when the association that's running a cemetery runs to zero. So they're getting ahead of the game in that sense, letting us know. So we have some pieces, business pieces put together. It would probably eventually fall onto lands and buildings jurisdiction, and that's in the general fund, so that's what you must be aware of. It'll probably require an increase of some kind of personnel at one point or another because it's a bigger footprint in an active cemetery. Most of the actual burials are done by the funeral services, so that's not a thing we have to really deal with in that sense. But the maintenance of the records, the maintenance of the grounds, since it is a primo cemetery to keep track of, there will be some capital costs along the way. We've kind of looked at the possibility of actually putting, townships can actually put a cemetery tax, levy a cemetery tax. I think the decision is we should find out what it's going to cost to run this before we start going forward with that, if we're going to. I think their budget, with their running at the very minimum, is about $40,000 a year. So, you know, we've got about a half a year, a year and a half in the coffers, and there is some income coming in, but nothing enough to balance it. But again, it's our responsibility at this point by law. So we're trying to get the paperwork in place, legislation in place, and do the handover as best possible.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Walker?
I just had a quick one. Mr. Walker, is there a military service members section within this cemetery that you're aware of?
May I have Pete Good address that?
Certainly.
Here. Pete, come on up.
Yeah, I'm Pete Good. I'm 32 Strathmore Boulevard here in Athens. Any questions?
Basically, my question was, is there a section within this particular cemetery that's designated as a military service members section within?
Is all military personnel is buried there? No. We do have a space up on the top of the cemetery with the flag where every Memorial Day there is a service held up there by the legion, so they do do that.
So there is, I think there's two, isn't there? Two military memorials?
There's a lot of military people, but they're scattered through the cemetery.
Sure. My reason for asking is, I know that one of the things is that for war memorials, it's the county can and does take care of memorials, but these footprints are very small in the cemetery. In other words, it's probably 10, 12 square foot of space for each one of these. So it's small.
I know this probably sounds like a big deal. Nobody wants to take over a cemetery, I'll tell you. But if it's handled properly, my feeling, there's no sense making a mountain out of a molehill. We operate with two fellows that cut grass. They've been there 20, 25 years. They're not only able to cut grass, that we have people that stop by and they want to know where Aunt Susan's buried. They can look those up. We have probably the best card file and computer system in this end of the country as far as records go. We can find almost immediately where, but it's rest of the cemeteries don't. The cemetery is all laid out in sections. Some of the markers are down in. We have to probe for them. But all the work that I've done, and I've been there, I have to guess somewhere around 45 years, we're all volunteers. We always have been. And basically, you're looking at, the thing that gets out there is the maintenance, the trees that die, the streets, the streets need paved. If we would pave the streets, that would end up, we don't have the money at this time. At one time, the cemetery made a lot of money. But basically, there are a few lots over there that are available, but nothing like it used to be. And of course, I think this year, if I had to guess, we'd probably had maybe six or seven funerals. And the boys are, they're minimum wage boys, they are good boys now. So it's handled properly, you just kind of need somebody to oversee and take care of the bookwork. That's the problem, is the bookwork, because you have to watch after pretty close, see if the money goes, make sure it comes in.
So my question has maybe less to do with this cemetery, but how are other West State Street cemeteries? Obviously, that must be under a different section, or the city's been in charge of that for a long time?
We've never really, we've basically never had a set aside fund line for that. We've pulled people off of, Mr. Gilkey, who has an interest in cemeteries, before retired, used to maintain that on his own time in many cases, or sometimes on city time. We have our, I think, lands and buildings covers the cutting of the grass. Streets covers cutting the grass?
Streets has been with lands and building, but we've been conformed by the orders office that it has, it's, that's separate proprietary, so we're going to go.
So that's my concern, is the upkeep, because I know that's, I mean, there's old stones that are broken or vandalized or whatever, and I would hate for that. It sounds like there is a system in place at this current cemetery we are soon to take over, but I am very concerned about the, maybe it is maintenance, maybe that's what I'm talking about here.
When we received West State Street, at least, you know, what we've heard from division heads that have been here for a period of time, it was pretty much a, can we call it a dead cemetery?
A dormant cemetery. There aren't that many people being buried there.
There have probably been four, I want to say, over the last 15 years, if that, that have had actual burials. So we're actually maintaining a dormant cemetery there.
But still, I mean, I guess that's where we need to look at, the fund lines or how we come up with the monies for that kind of thing, because again, it's a historic cemetery that has basically fallen into disrepair, and I would hate for that to happen to this cemetery as well. So I...
We will have to look at the funding revenue stream at one point or another. I mean, if it's just going to pull it out of the general fund, it's probably going to be, we're going to have to find a better way to fund it. If it's got, you know, again, the estimate is about 40K a year. I don't think the West State Street Cemetery ever required, we needed that much. Pretty much the trees were disappearing every time one fall down. They wouldn't replace it. The markers, I think a couple of years ago, some organization went through and updated some of the markers. That was an individual doing, organization doing it. Again, it's not something that there's a lot of people have plots in there that need to be filled at this point, can be filled. The record keeping is actually very spotty as well. I would say if anybody has a number on that, it's Mr. Gilkey at that point. I remember him doing a presentation for, I think, for the West Side Community Association. He has done a lot of homework on that, but those records are there. But again, it's not an active, working cemetery.
And West Union will be. And I like the model of utility billing, and there's obviously going to be continued discussion about that, but where, you know, payments are made and records, you know, and the whole record keeping component.
Well, again, at some point, it will be dormant as well. There just won't be any spots left to bury people.
But there's a number of spots. They're not anywhere close to being like the other cemetery. So I think that one of the things is that, one of the ideas, I think, behind the ORC rules is that cities are equipped to long-term budgets, long-term maintenance of records and those sort of things. So I think that's one...
So then I think that we need to plan for that.
Well, and that's one of the things, is that it will, through this process, the other cemetery can be included in all the ordinances that we produce for this, and the fund line that will have to be developed, and it will become more formal, the other one.
My notes indicated there were around 1460 blank graves, but I have a notation, most sold, and that there are some aisleways and what have you, but I'm not sure. And I guess I'll leave that to you in determination of whether or not we continue to sell, or if it's fairly built out.
Well, I think you should. The aisleways have never been used, probably all of them have got somebody in, one parts of. Aisleways are good for singles. Most people want to be buried husband, wife, side by side. They can be buried end to end if they choose. Most people do not. So there's probably a few aisleways that would allow that. There are a lot of lots over there that can be sold. A lot of the lots are people that bought, oh, they'd buy 10 lots. The family would, the mother and father would be buried, the kids would move off to California, and they'd start their own. So they would end up about there. So although there's 10 lots, maybe there's only two of them used, or three, depending. So somebody could probably do something to try to contact some of those families and say, are you going to use these? Would you like to turn them back in? We've had a lot of them turned back in. But as far as the markers go, unless you want to tackle that, the markers are the responsibility of the person who bought the lots. That lot is no different than you buying a lot to build a house on. When you buy that lot, that's your lot, you can put whatever you want to on that lot within reason, and that's your responsibility to keep it up. If it falls down, it's basically your responsibility to have somebody get it, or hopefully a family member does. That's the reason some of these monuments fall down, the family's gone. We prop them back up, but we do not repair them. We don't pay for any repairs like that, so.
Mr. Penner?
Mr. Mayor brought up something about like even the title of it, the townships can put for their cemeteries. Because, and I would check them out or not, because that's something that the city can do as far as putting something like maybe a quarter percent or something like, because you know, it wouldn't have to be a very big levy.
I think we can do it. Again, it has to be put on a ballot because of the level of tax that we exist now. I would prefer to find out what the costs are when we're handling it and what it looks like before we start saying, let's go do this. I think the conversations we've had with the orders office that it's a lot of work to put this through and, you know, to put a small incremental amount just for this. I think people would vote for it, provided that's where it's going. But the question arises is, you know, we should have a solid know what that's going to cost. There are upkeep questions, as discussed. The roadway needs to be repaved, some of the mausoleum roof has to be fixed. There's a high expectation of this looking very nice all the time, especially at Memorial Day time, but the fact is, year-round, this is an active cemetery with visitors, many visitors. So that's one thing we have to look at, that the level of maintenance we're going to have to put together for this to make it work, and the cost.
No, I think that's what they're talking about, is putting some kind of...
Thank you. I think this is a really important conversation, and I appreciate learning more about this issue, and also am cognizant of the increased, you know, cost and work that's going to be required to go into this. And some of my questions have already been addressed as far as the potential for increased staff and cost, but also realizing that we may be acquiring mowers that can be used there rather than having to acquire additional equipment for the city to use there. I have one remaining question, and that is, if this cemetery has the capacity or infrastructure in place for green burials, which is a growing trend in the funeral industry? And I don't know if anybody can answer that here.
We talked briefly about that at one of our meetings. I'm not sure it would fulfill the full definition of what a green cemetery would be, but that is something that we've talked about. It depends on if the city wants to take on selling new lots and doing the requirement to do that for a green cemetery and...
Could you explain what a green cemetery is?
A green cemetery is an idea where you are buried without having excessive chemicals and being very natural. So people who do green burials will be put in a cardboard box, sounds horrible, or a wood coffin. And so the idea is that you compost.
We do a lot of cremations now.
Right. And there is ability to put, a crematorium is on the site and such. So a lot of green cemeteries are, one of the ideas is that they're in a protected area, so it's also trying to protect open space.
Question. Does the law require that a coffin be enclosed in a vault?
No.
In the ground?
Yeah.
Like a cement vault?
Well, they have to be in a...
I mean, all my relatives went that way.
Casket, and then they go into the vault.
Right. Then it goes into the ground.
The old, that's one way we can make sure that if a person is going to go into the ground, that there's not somebody else there. We probe. And we just go right down, and you'll hit the vault, and it'll bang, and you know, yeah, that's somebody in there. But the problem is, the cemetery is so old, and so many of them back years ago were in boxes. The boxes are now rotted. There's basically no way to tell, because that's the way they were all put in years ago. They didn't have vaults.
Well, the point of the vault was, it seals the corpse away from the groundwater so that groundwater contamination occurred.
That's exactly right. It's sealed. Everybody's in a vault nowadays.
That kind of, it can't be greened and be in a vault.
Well, if you want to be cremated, you can be put in a...
They're not talking about cremation.
No, it's not, it's not an appropriate place for a green cemetery. However, ORC regulations do allow for green cemeteries, or green cemeteries in the state of Ohio.
Maybe new cemeteries.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Good or Mr. Walker?
So we'll keep you informed of how this is rolling out, but there will be legislation to accept it, accept the money, and then generation of fund lines and...
Personnel. Basically, you're going to own it.
And we have no choice. So, thank you.
I might say one more thing, but I will be happy to work with whoever comes in because you're going to have gobs of questions. The thing that we have as much as anything are people wanting to know where family members are buried, and there's got to be somebody that can hunt those people out, and that's a little difficult. So I will be more than happy to help whatever it takes or how long.
One last question occurred to me, property tax. We now own it, you just said that. We will own it.
You will. I mean, it's come out upon you. Partnay?
I, it's probably, it's a...
Why not? Property, like you said, you own it.
We pay taxes, but I'm not sure we pay the property tax.
The city wouldn't pay property tax.
Yeah, it's non-profit.
We do pay property tax on some of our properties.
Yeah, but we're not making money on this. We won't make money on it. That's the bottom line.
But it's also...
Well, you don't like to make money to pay property tax.
It's also, I think cemeteries fall under a different taxing authority under the ORC. It's also a nonprofit, so, you know...
Okay.
But that will be added to our questions. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that will be, you'll hear further about it. So, any other questions? Next on the agenda is, we talked briefly about the special events, well, we talked actually quite a while about the special events permitting process that I introduced a few weeks ago. There was a couple of questions and comments from the city about changing some of the definitions and such in it. So I went back and did that, and so I bring it forward with its new updated version. It's been vetted by the law director. Basically, there was a concern about things like car cruises, trick-or-treating, those sort of things, where they don't take much time, they don't take much resources, and they close the street down for a very limited amount of time. So the special events, the events that the special event permit applies to has been updated to preclude parades, car cruises, children trick-or-treating events.
I'm sorry, what was that word you used? Precluded? So they're not included?
They're not included. And I sent this to you.
I know.
So, and that was a question, that was an issue about some of the things that are so tiny that we really shouldn't be worrying too much. The other thing was the question about what sponsorship means exactly for the city. So it's been updated to include a definition for sponsoring or cosponsoring. An event conducted by the city of Athens or cosponsored by the city of Athens is exempt from obtaining a special event permit. Cosponsored by city means the city of Athens has entered into an agreement to provide certain services, money, or space for an event. Provision of city resources does not constitute event sponsorship or cosponsorship. So if you're going and providing information to an event does not imply, as somebody tried to imply for one of their fundraising events, that the city was supportive and cosponsoring the event. So it has to be in agreement. And that's something that we do now through council, basically like bounty on the bricks. We say yes, and we kind of donate some of the manpower and person power and such for that sort of thing. It'd just be more formalized. So those were the two main issues that were brought forward by the city administration and by council. So I'll open it up for discussions and...
Can I ask a question right away on that last point you made about donating time? So we're looking at a document that says for an event such as Boogie on the Bricks, we're looking at over $2,000 is what the total came up of our donated time, money.
Right. Well, the idea that, right now, we basically don't have a process to bill organizations for any of the things that we do, you know, parking, closing the streets, providing of, you know, all that sort of stuff. The permit, the event permit process is to get a handle on possible events that may occur in the city, such as, you know, large events that may occur out at the fairground or other parts of the city, so that we have a process to keep tabs on how the event is being organized, planned, and make sure everything is safe and legal during that event. And then also that if it has an extraordinary impact on city finances, that then there is a process by which we can bill basically the organization or the event sponsor. So it may be that Boogie on the Bricks is such a good economic development tool that the city says, we will be happy to donate parking or begging of the meters or whatever, but it will be a process that we can look at that, make sure that the event is well planned and safe.
Chris, I did just send it to some of the department heads today, particularly police, fire, code, and EPW, because they do the most of the manpower for that. And we'd like just a little more time as they look at it. There are some high significant cost parade events that are his, what do you call it?
Historically...
For grandfathered in and, you know...
But there's another process for parades. Parades have to get a permit. And the idea with the grandfathering of what is termed, I forget how we... And the idea with the grandfathering of what is termed, I forget how we defined it, Lisa defined it in a certain way, that, let's say somebody wants to do a big music festival or something, and they, you know, it's, and they put a permit in, but it's like they choose the weekend of Mother's Day, which tends to have high impact on certain services. Then that would allow for the city to say, this is not a good weekend, you need to do another weekend, and it's a, you know, it gives precedence to those certain festivals or weekends, homecoming, Mother's Day, street festival, international street festival, so that those that have been long-running don't get overshadowed by large-scale events.
Well, I'll gather their comments and try to get them to you this week.
This isn't much different than the other one that I sent you, that you had also sent out.
They already reviewed.
So they can look at the updated version. Other questions?
I would just comment that there's a balancing act between economic generating and what the city has to pay out. So we know that Boogie on the Bricks costs us $2,000, let's say, plus whatever, you know, whatever. A parade permit currently costs $25 to file. Certainly, let's say homecoming parade, that's a huge economic generator for this community, but we have extra officers, we have all of that, and, you know, I don't know if it's something where we could increase our fees, just some, I mean, $25 is not very much.
Actually, homecoming is a grandfather.
Yeah, we don't charge for homecoming, and that's why they must inquire the most police presence in all the roadblocks.
Right.
Again, parade's falling out of the mix. We basically have a police officer at each intersection.
Right.
It's a rolling blockage, but it still costs money. Closing the streets for, you know, you start to say grandfather stuff, you're talking about International Street Fair, homecoming, these are not minor events.
Right.
Again, the thrust of it is to say, okay, these get, we have a procedure, how to vet these. I understand that, but the fact is you're dropping a lot of them off, either for the grandfather factor or the size, because you consider-
Grandfathered events aren't necessarily exempt from going through the process, however, they get a priority for the dates that they choose. So if, you know, we know that certain dates, the third weekend of whatever is always an event, then that kind of gets booked, you know, blacked out on the schedule. It's an idea that if we have four or five events going on, how do you prioritize? And how, and you have to say at one point, that's too many events, and so you need to pick another, you know, day. And so, and I think that one of the, one of the things in my mind that's a priority of this is to make sure that all the Ts are crossed. Right now, we just do a street closing, we do glass-free, we do parking and vending, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, for certain events and such, there's a lot more planning that needs to go on. This puts, this has, you know, basically a checklist of all the things that we expect from event sponsors of, and that they have to do it. They don't get to say, you know, we'll do it.
So when you say grandfather, you're not saying that they don't have to go through this process?
Right.
You're just saying that-
That they get a priority. You know, like certain homecoming, we don't want a big event on homecoming weekend. We would like not to have a big event on International Street Festival.
We wouldn't have a marathon on homecoming weekend, to close other streets.
And it gets other people to think about, you know, the fact that they have to, like, we've had a couple of times where somebody's come in and said, oh, we want to do an event, and then we have to do, you know, have to pass them on second reading by, and that's, you know, this is, also gets people to think about applying and such.
How would we determine, offhand, is, I haven't read the latest version, the criteria for when they do entangle or actually cross-thread each other's events? I mean, I could understand saying, we're going to have a marathon on one end of town and a homecom- let's take a homecoming, for instance, there's a football game that ties up to everything on Richland Avenue side, there's a parade at this side, ties everything. Temporarily, it's two different events, two different times, no problem, doesn't cross-thread, no problem with that. When do we decide it is a problem? Because at this point, we've closed down a parade, and we have police on one time, direction on Richland Avenue side for the homecoming. Do we say you can have a homecoming parade but not a homecoming football game? Or do we just say, oh, these are okay to have each one, one doesn't affect us?
That would be an administrative opportunity. It doesn't say you can't have it. It says if there is a problem and there's not enough police-
You're saying it's a coordinating activity.
It's a coordinating activity. If there is a problem and you have two parades coming, well, not parades, but you have two-
A marathon and a parade, how about that?
How about a marathon and the street festival?
Well, I think what recently happened in that weekend of April, what was that, 12th and 13th, or whatever that was, where we had a huge, huge event at OU going on, we had an International Street Fair, we had a number fest out in the county, we had a marathon the next morning, I mean, that was-
And beautification day. Have beautification day for me.
Oh, beautification day.
And that's one of the younger events, so we should have just a-
Well, I think that that's, it's, we can knock that one out. I think that communities that do this is, are IDing the fact that there are historical events that happen in Athens that the community really appreciates, and that it gives the opportunity for the administration to be able to say, this is too much, there's this event that has, takes precedence, you need to choose a different weekend. You know, it's, gives more tools in the toolbox for being able to coordinate and do these sort of things. Right now, there doesn't seem to be any coordination, and we can't say to a, you know, some humongous thing that they do at the fairgrounds, you can't do it that weekend because we don't have enough police, which can happen, it seems.
We don't have jurisdiction at the fairgrounds.
I don't think we have jurisdiction if they have a humongous thing.
We looked into that, and we do when they start going on to public right-of-ways.
So we closed down the entrance to the fairgrounds for Union Street. So you could, as council, you can close down Union Street for that event, right?
Well, I guess if you don't like the historical part, we can take it out. It's trying to give you more tools.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the thrust of it and how it's going to work, and I assume if somebody says, no, I want to do an Occupy Court Street, I guess I just have to deal with a fourth degree misdemeanor, is that the only penalty?
Well, I'm also wondering if it might be good to have, so it's not just fully on administration, but if there was a group, like maybe the tourism director, service safety, maybe if there was a couple people, I don't know. I'm just saying, because somebody from OU, then everybody kind of knows what everybody else's calendar is about, and we try to coordinate.
I guess I say by position, I feel that I should have jurisdictional authority just by the position.
I agree.
And discretion.
I agree.
We don't do these things in a vacuum, as you know, and we've, hearing tonight, you know, this may generate additional discussion in our MOU work group. We brought up calendar and calendar criticality at our last meeting about that sharing, so we know there's a forensics debate, or the space university, and luckily, the police chief hasn't been able to complete his calendar events for the end of this year yet, because even though a home football game may have been announced, a time is not announced yet. So they're aware of that, and I think we're going to be working towards-
Well, and I think the university's calendar is pretty much set in place in February, is what I was told.
Except, again, these athletic events aren't set in terms of timing.
Depends on the TV cover.
Right.
And they told us at the last meeting, they didn't have some of these things set down, so.
I appreciate the work that you've put towards this, and I'm just asking for another, I couldn't even instruct him to try to get any comments in before the end of the week, if you wanted this brought forth next week.
I just, I want to thank you for putting this document together, this handout, which kind of speaks to the cost of everything, starting looking at people power, closing the street, and there's electricians and name it. One thing that I think is on here, but it might be kind of, between the lines, is the bagging of meters, something, I just kind of did some quick math to put this together. You know, if you close down one street between Washington, let's say Washington to State, and close that down, that's $200 roughly of revenue lost on the parking meters, and we still have meter enforcement officers that are on the clock who are working, and so it's, it's compounded. But I really appreciate seeing this, and finally getting to look at the numbers that different events, that it does cost the city. So there's, has been in the past a rather large in-kind contribution to having some of these festivals take place.
I realize this is dated from last year when we had this discussion at one point. And again, we, there's probably pieces we're missing in this, so, you know.
I'm a little unclear from the discussion. I have the document that you prepared, thank you, about the cost, and these are all events that are grandfathered, but I'm a little unclear with the special events wording the way it is. Are we, to me, grandfathered implies they're on the books as having been free in the past. Does that necessarily continue with this new special events?
That's, in the code language as it is now, that's an administrative decision.
Okay.
I think that, you know, if Boogie on the Bricks wanted to do two days, then that would be a discussion that the administration can have. It's written in that if there, I think that if it's a, if the balancing between, the grandfathering doesn't have anything to do with, that they're exempt from the process, from the permit process, or that it's assumed to be free, it's a calendar issue. And if it's causing so many people problems, we can take it out, and it's just whoever gets there first gets to have, you know, their sort of thing. I mean, that could be one way. This was one way, the city who had a lot of stuff going on tried to deal with manpower issues, and, and so we can remove that if it's causing people heartburn. And if, you know, I'm thinking this is more in the line of big events, and if we want to put on a person, you know, threshold of any event over X amount, that has to, that triggers the special event permit process, we can also do that. I think that it's good to have everybody go through a process to identify all the needs and all the requirements that it takes to have a safe event. But you can, you know, we can do it that way. It's trying to, you know, kind of edit our way, make it work for the city Athens. Athens is one of the only high-event happening, happening place that doesn't have a special events permit process. You know, Marietta, Nelsonville, you know, besides the big Cs, almost, you know, most towns have it in Ohio. Athens is one notable exception.
You know, when people complain, my sister from Cleveland says, here's the stack of regulations for in order to have a closure or a street.
Right, and I think-
Well, there's a reason for that.
Right. I think sometimes people, it's always been done this way, and then we get into problems. I think that now, in the county, the number fest has run into problems because it's always been kind of done this way, and then it's just kind of, people start assuming, and then assumptions are not necessarily a good thing in order to have future happiness. Sounds like a fortune cookie, but, so, you know, if people have comments and stuff, please email them to me, and I'll work on language.
I think for whoever we do, we don't tie the administration's hands, because they're the ones that push one ground, and they're out there walking the scene, and they have to make quick decisions on what has to be done. So I, that's one thing I would like, so I'm glad you put this together and we know what the costs are, but again, I don't like to see the administration's hands being tied.
But hopefully, they wouldn't have, this has nothing to do with police being able to do things on the ground. This is hopefully making sure that things are all planned upfront, and that there's comment, there's, you know, contact information, and, and also if somebody screws up and they have an event that goes out of control, that the next year they apply for a permit, they're not necessarily, you know, they get one. So it makes sure that the onus is on the people who do the event.
I will just share with council, these major events, we, there is a lot of pre-planning. As a matter of fact, you reached out today. Normally, I start my first Halloween planning meeting in August, but we're going to start it here in June, just, you know, a little bit more, but it's probably because of historically, it's just, we know that it's coming. And the boogie and the brew, there are pre-planning that go along with those, even the little AUBA trick-or-treats, it all takes the organization to come together and-
Right.
Well, and I think that's important for, you know, the community to know, it's not like these things just happen.
No.
That, you know, there are many hours of meetings for especially the larger events, many, many hours of meetings, and those kinds of things. And for people who want these kind of events, I think, again, the event permit, when you mentioned the stack of paper, I think it's important for the people that want to have the event to understand everything that goes into that.
And also doing, I think sometimes people come and say, oh, we want to do an event, tell us what to do. You know, kind of, what do you want us to do? And then this is something that you provide and say, these are the requirements, and they're not anything onerous. They hopefully are things that every event sponsor or organizer would do, but it also provides a process that helps back you up also. If somebody doesn't provide something for it, you could say, well, you know, your permit is on the line, you need to get this into me, because right now, we don't have, like, I guess city council could say, we don't want to close the street, but that seems more-
We could vote that way, I guess.
Right, but that seems more not as rational, and when it comes down to us voting not to close the street, it seems a little more haphazard. Okay, great. Thank you. I have no miscellaneous.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to-
Do you have any miscellaneous?
No, I'm just trying to find where I can see the agenda, but I found it.
No miscellaneous. We'll move on to Finance and Personnel Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, our fiscal policy, the auditor's office, overpayment of employees, and the auditor is present, would you be prepared to speak to it?
Hey, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and just a quick refresher on what this came about. We had two probationary employees who were granted 2% raises on January 1st, it shouldn't have been. In February, the first one to come up to complete their probation was given another Basically, the decision was made between HR and that supervisor, I don't know who else might have been involved, to let it go. Then a couple of weeks later, we had our second person in early March who was eligible. Well, then, the supervisor, and we were aware of this, my office is the one that pointed it out in February when it happened, but we weren't involved in any of these decisions. So for the second person, the supervisor was approached, and the decision was made not to give that one the 2%, and just to let the 2% from the beginning of the year go and not ask for payback. So we have two employees, one male and one female, who were treated differently under the same circumstances. And so I've just been trying to get something done at this point, and when I was here even two weeks ago, it just has gotten to the point where it's become awkward to ask the employees for payback. It puts the supervisors in a difficult position to go to them and say, you know, we've been overpaying you for four or five months, and you have to pay it back, and, you know, I don't know what else to do. So I contacted our state auditors and asked, and they said that typically, and actually, we came to our own decision on what to do, but we can set a threshold for payback, and council can approve not asking for it back. And so rather than come to council each time and, you know, have to discuss circumstances and name names and whatever, we put together a policy that would just cover every time, we hope every time, sometimes always an exception to the rule pops up, but we decided if council would pass a policy that would cover it, then we wouldn't have to draw attention to it each time it happens. So as some other background, this has not been our past practices ever, to not recoup money that was owed to the city. So, you know, I have mixed feelings about it. I really moved forward with this because of one of the supervisors in particular, but I think the big thing is, so then we pushed to stop continuing to pay this new employee the extra 2%. That just happened a couple of weeks ago. We finally just said, we're not doing it anymore, we need to notify them, because that is really a, you know, an EEO complaint waiting to be, you know, pushed. So we did stop the other one, and of course, both of them are on the list to get the addition- So we did stop the other one, and of course, both of them are on the list to get the additional 1% on this next pay. So the other part about it is each of them owe, for the time they're getting the extra 2% when they should have 10200 and 10250. Because they're a different payback, as one person was obviously getting a higher rate than the other person. So even though the one person was getting 4% up until a couple of weeks ago increase, still the payment totals are around 200 and 250. So this is where we are. I sent late today our latest draft of this. I don't know, did everybody get a copy of that? Have you seen it? I sent it by email. Actually, Jeff and I just met late on Thursday to go over it again. And then I went out of town this weekend for Mother's Day and visited one of my children anyway. So I wasn't here Friday. So I was looking at this today and I just thought, you know, I should send this because we did add the final paragraph the other day. I don't know if you want me to go over this. I think the first paragraph is pretty clear. If it's under $500, we're not going to ask for it back. However, we do want to cover a circumstance where, say, everybody in a department is given, is given the wrong percentage, you know, used for the pay raise. So even though the individuals might only be overpaid $100, if you have 12 people working, the aggregate is 1,200, we are going to ask for that back. Okay? The second one is if someone is overpaid $600, they don't get to deduct the $499, take the 500, and just pay us back 100. If they have to pay it back, they just pay it all back. Okay? And then the final one, well, this isn't the final one that sort of, they, we can't take a check or cash or anything for the payback. It has to be handled through our payroll system. And the only thing we did add, which is kind of bolded, it has to be paid back within the fiscal year that it occurred. In the past, we have allowed employees to spread the repayments out over there. So if they owed even $200, that might be sort of a hardship that they didn't realize they were overpaid, the money's gone. They could spread, spread that out over several pays. However, it does need to all be done by the end of the year so that their W2 reflects their correct pay amount. And then the final one is the last one we just added last week, I think. It has to do with timesheets because this happens pretty regularly, that there are errors on timesheets. We often catch them before their process, but not necessarily. We have several departments that operate 24/7. The employees aren't always available to sign their timesheets when they're turned in. The supervisors also have to sign. So we ask them to go ahead and send them to us so that we can start processing payroll and, and then try to make, you know, any corrections within the next week before we send it off to the bank for a payment. So, and sometimes that happens, you know, with supervisors. It can be a supervisor, the employee, you know, different reasons. And it's just really a mistake that needs to be corrected as soon as possible. So the thing about that is, we don't want this policy in feel free, if anybody reads this and has any, you know, suggestions for wording. We don't want it to be that they can add eight hours of overtime on every timesheet because it's not going to be over $500 and just, you know, do that and say, well, that's a mistake, but I don't have to pay it back. You know what I mean? So I don't know that anybody would, but if that were to happen, and that's why we have that, that threshold limit, then we're just going to, you know, continue to correct the timesheets. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee or others?
I have a question. Okay, so I'm not an accountant. And I work in a business where a supervisor collects all the timesheets. I don't know that that particular person knows what everyone's hourly rate is or would sit there and do the calculations. I think that what they do is they look at the time that the person puts down as worked and what section, whether it's overtime, vacation, conference, whatever, or regular time.
Sure. And we have departments that use a time clock. And then that information is transcribed onto the timesheet. So mistakes can be made then. One department uses a log, and then that's transcribed onto a timesheet. So it's easy to make mistakes.
So there's a lot of places along the line, you're saying that mistakes have been made. Now, I guess where I still get confused is if you're paid more money than what you are supposed to be paid hourly or overtime or whatever, the fact that you don't, that you, we're kind of saying you get a freebie up to $500, is what we're saying. If somebody along the way makes the mistake.
And maybe we need some different wording here, but I am assuming that is a miscalculation by either, basically, we get our memos from HR telling us somebody gets a raise, or they get this amount. Or we do a payout and are calculating the new pay rates or percentages based on a contract change, especially when it's a retro pay. So it's really easy to make mistakes in that. Those are very hard to do. And this one, like I said, the probationary employees were overlooked, which is, people make mistakes. However, it should have been corrected, you know, three months ago, and it wasn't. It's just a difficult situation. The other thing I will tell you is our payroll administrator, it's really a pain to go in and make these corrections after the fact. Because we do have to reconcile, I think it's, it's mentioned in here, with all their taxes, Medicare, their pension fund.
Right.
All those amounts have to be adjusted when we recoup that money. So we have to decide down the line, and you can change this threshold if you want. You know, this $500 was actually mentioned in the state auditor's email. But that's kind of the threshold for other cities where they go to council and just ask it be forgiven.
Well, isn't there a point where doing the reconciliations and checking to find out what the mistakes are and so on, the amount of time that you're going to invest in actually tracking down and finding out what the problem was and then correcting it, is going to cost more than the amount that you're going to recoup?
Right.
So at that point, it's, we're losing.
Yes, and at some point, and I would say in this instance, these employees probably didn't realize that they shouldn't have gotten that.
Well, the way I'm reading your policy is that you're giving the employee and the supervisors and everybody the benefit of the doubt. It's an honest mistake, things happen. If it's a fraud, you know, just out and out fraud, someone just decides, hey, listen, I need extra money and I'm going to get it this way. That falls into a completely different set of policies, like the criminal justice.
It does. It does, you're right. Yeah. I would say that these are really just honest mistakes.
Right.
Now, do I think in some instances, the employees, I know for a fact, they were overpaid and didn't say anything? Yes, it happened last year. However, if you don't think that phone's ringing at 8:00 the next day after somebody gets paid and they've been underpaid, even by a small amount, they're calling and asking us about it. So we've, we've had employees complain about two cents, you know. So it's just the way it works, human nature, I guess.
Mr. Captain.
Same policy, would you add the language in there about overpayment, say, underpayment also?
If.
If you've underpaid somebody?
We always pay them if they're underpaid. I guess that we can add a line saying, underpayments will always be paid, whether it's, you know, a dollar or a thousand.
I've been too, having gone through this ourselves, myself personally too, is that it's taxpayer money.
It is.
Whoever had to pay it back, and we didn't care if it was a dollar, it was paid back.
Well, that's been our policy and our past practice. So, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I don't have really strong feelings either way on this policy. I'm just trying to make things right the way they are instead of having it hanging out there. Because it's, you know, it's difficult. Now we've gone down the line where, you know, it's just farther down the line. Although we did correct the other 2%, and we know the amounts that have been overpaid, so.
Well, personally, I think it's a good idea. I think it's good to have a written policy. The only problem I have with policies in general is that you work hard on it, you get it set, council approves it, it goes out there. And then as time goes on, the corporate memory sort of starts to fade. And then maybe a year or two, three years pass and people go, do we have a policy for that somewhere? I mean, how do you prevent that? You have a plan? Are you going to notify all the department heads and say, this is our new policy?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I typically, and we've been working on it now, just every year I send out reminders from the auditor's office about things I should and shouldn't do, and when timesheets are due, and things like that. As you said, as time goes on, careless and, you know, drag it out. We only have so much time to process and things like that. So we absolutely can put it out there. I'll tell you, the only thing I can say is, you know, I'm going to be in there another four years, starting next January, so I'll still be here. However, I have found paperwork around our office regarding policies and past practices that have not been followed, that, I guess I feel like the information is out there, somebody takes the time to look for it. We have to remember that there's not very much that we do now that hasn't been done or faced by previous administrations. And so they've probably addressed it in one way or another. Should be looked at.
Any more questions, counsel? Administration?
My comment would be that I ruled to recoup the payments.
100%.
And any other errors and omissions.
I told you, that's been, you know, that's, that's why it's really, I just have mixed feelings about it. I just think we're in an awkward situation where it just hung out there too long. We tried to get something.
Do you have any insight of why the state auditor would say 500?
No. Well, no. Seems a little bit high. But then again, like you said, there is a cost having somebody recalculate all this. There is the employee relations morale issue, when they receive money, used it, not realizing. I think clearly in this instance, they didn't realize that they were getting, you know, everybody was getting a raise, it was a new year, even though they hadn't been here very long. You know, I don't know, I don't do their orientations, I don't know what they were told, you know, it's always been six months probation, but, you know, who tracks that? So, but there are instances, like I said last year, where they were overpaid, they all knew it and did not say a word. So, you know, and we wouldn't have known if someone hadn't told us about that last year. We didn't realize we'd used the wrong percentage calculation for three employees.
Madam President.
I just had one question on the, the language of it, and it could have been, I missed it in the conversation. So this is a second paragraph. So the first paragraph sets out that overpayments of the 500 will not be recouped unless it's part of an overpayment. But then the second paragraph says, when the employee is required to repay an overpayment under the conditions set forth above, the full amount will be recouped. So the 500 does not apply, is that?
Yeah, if, like, the three people I'm referring to last year, all, it was like 750, one of them was overpaid over 1,000, and the other one was somewhere, and they were all over $500. And so if that were to happen now, we wouldn't say, you're over 500, you have to pay it back, but we're not going to make you do 500 of it. If they're paying it back, they need to just pay it all back.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Okay.
We're not going to go in and say, you got overpaid 600, but you only have to pay 100. If we're recouping the money, we need to get it all back.
So the 500's the minimum threshold?
Right.
Got it, okay.
So if the total overpayment isn't over that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Finance and Personnel Committee?
Thank you.
Okay. The next item I have on the agenda, the APD computer appropriations, striking that.
Yes, we'll be pulling the, transferring the money from the 580, 207 for the vehicles and move that into the computers. It's only about $2,000 or so, so it shouldn't take much to do that. Again, that's when, it doesn't require an act of counsel. If there comes time that we may donate money into the capital funds for that second cruiser, and we're waiting for the funds to look at for the half-year mark before we order that second cruiser, we might have to come back on it and ask for that appropriation. But as it stands now, it's just a cap off, at least there's five computers needed at APD. And this will cover, three of them can, we have them up to three, but we need the two, other two to replace. So, so no action on council needed at this point.
One, one question I have, and sort of goes to this. We've been doing a lot of computer purchasing through different departments and so on this past couple of months. And I've been trying to find out, and I don't know the answer. Is there a common policy among the city departments about computer purchases?
You see, it's changed over the years. Some years we've been able to buy it out of supplies, now that auditors deemed it all capital. And in one year, it was all set in the Internal Service Computer Fund and, you know, put 20,000 or 30,000 in there and everybody would purchase them there. So.
And other times, we started a leasing program, leased computers. We've tried different models over the year. I think we had to start with a three-year lease program with the idea that valuable life of the, of the computer would be about five years, so we'd get a computer for the last two years. I think, I think it was out of gateway, which evaporated as a company almost immediately. So there's a lot of mix of how to go about doing this. And at times, every department would buy their own computer out of their own fund, and then you'd get a whole different range of types of computers. Some that would have the capability that they actually thought they had, and some that would not. Some that would have, come with a software, some that would not, and that would have to purchase software additionally.
Well, I'm thinking since we have a highly skilled tactical department of people who really, I mean, they live in the geekosphere.
And we keep them running in the geekosphere quite a bit.
They're all supposed to be vetted through the IT division.
Apparently a lot.
Based on what they need and, and what occurs there.
Is it?
So the reason it's not budgeted this year is there, in the past, they have been able to purchase it out of supplies. But the auditor determines what is capital and what is not. Most recently, we had to modify for some of the tools that the mechanics purchase. It was determined from the auditor's office that that also had to be purchased out of capital. So you may see some request shifts for transfers for money from the 200s and 300s to the 500s for, you know, basic what was deemed at then maybe operational supply is now deemed capital.
In fact, there was a good amount of money, some money in the computer fund for computers at APD, but since there was a purchase earlier, supplies, they pulled the money out of cap and transferred it, switched it over. So there's some money lost in the process there. If you look at the mechanics, for instance, some of the, some of the items are actually software for diagnostic, computer diagnosis systems. So, you know, is that, you know, that's always a question, software is a capital item or not? And many people say it's just a price, but then again, you know.
And we don't have a price. I mean, it would be different if we knew that any purchase of $500 or greater was deemed a capital expense, but we don't, so.
You may have asked about an IT person. I was always familiar that we always had a data board that purchased out of computers that the board would meet once a week. And departments would bring in their requests of, you know, what computers are needed, whether they're outdated or whether they need upgraded, and these type of things. And I guess I'm kind of surprised that we.
We do have regular, not that regular, IT meetings, just look at the needs of what's, what's going on. Some of it actually has to, when you talk about computers, not only computers, so it's the entire IT range from the voice-over IP telephone system that we have, maintenance of the towers, repeaters and the transmitters. So it gets a pretty wide scope to just say, let's concentrate on this or that. Some of the peripheral aspects of it too, is that you have, as Jeff would say, you have all the, the calculators now are part of the computer, you know, realm in terms of hardware and, and memory. We actually are having discussions about the GIS process that we use. It's a, you know, it's, it's very nice, it's being run through Ilngard, is that the way we want to go with that? Is that going to meet our needs? Do we pool and share our services with the county, GIS abilities? And so when you say, yeah, computer meeting, you know, computer committee, it's really all the IT representatives from the different departments and needs that get together. And it's not always, it's pretty much always the same group, I would say, but it depends on how, how the problems are shaking up. If that makes sense, I guess.
We do do bulk purchasing through CDWG, which is a government purchase, as it were. And that's usually where most of the peripherals, like laptops, computers.
But in some cases, some departments have went outside of that and purchased like at Staples.
Well, except that got pulled back.
That used to happen quite a bit. I think that was one of the ones that the, the previous IT person complained about, is that they'd get these ASO models that had, that basically stripped down, no software, you know, no, nothing to put on it, and then he'd have to load it all up there. And of course, get the licensing proper to do that. So it's best if you, you know what you want in terms of a package.
Right.
And even then, some of the, some of the staff members don't know what exactly they need, you know? They almost have to be guided, say, okay, you really don't need this type of capacity, you really do need this type of capacity. We're having discussions in terms of firewall service contracts coming up, I think. We're having discussions in terms of firewall service contracts coming up, I think, right now, and whether we should invest in one or just let, you know, we have like a two-stage screen at this point, do we want to drop down to one, and what does that mean in terms of capability? And again, I am not an expert at this point, so, and we also keep our guys very busy. You talk about an IT department of actually two.
We will be bringing forth a proposal for the new server hardware here sometime in the coming months, and I'll try to bring you in early, Jeff, so, because you guys can talk the talk.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the computer issue? I don't have anything on miscellaneous that I'm aware of, unless something's happened in the last five minutes.
Okay.
Hey, last five hours, but not five minutes, so I don't know.
We'll move on to city and safety services with councilperson Patterson serving as chair.
Thank you, Madam President. The only item that we have on the agenda tonight is the municipal refuse and recycling RFP. Some of you will remember, a couple of weeks ago, during, in committee, we've talked about having a contract renewal with one-year extension, but things have changed since then, and Service Safety Director, would you like to speak to the new approach, which is to go through with an RFP?
Sure, thank you. The RFP, evaluated and submitted an legal notice in yesterday's paper. This morning, the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District Board voted to take back their refuse, well, the refuse and recycling operations that were being run by the Athens-Hawking Recycling Center as a separate nonprofit entity, which therefore gives us and empowers us, and the law directors reviewed the different ORC references, the ability to negotiate directly with that subdivision, governmental subdivision entity, so that we can, you know, proceed down the path of what we had. The reason I've also provided you the RFP is this is kind of our template and our, what our best model and what will be used in the negotiations with the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District, so.
Well, it gives you a point of reference at this point. Again, I think they were trending to try and split it apart, I'm not sure how this occurred, but it was up to, it's again, it's up to the district to how they want to go about overseeing recycling and solid waste, and they had the purview to do this.
Now, which board, which board?
Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District.
Approved to have the recycling back?
They didn't, Athens-Hawking, if I got this, if I have this correctly, doesn't actually own the equipment, and the employees had been, started to be separated, but a number of them were still under the Athens.
There's still county employees.
So, so they're just basically saying, we're taking our operations back over.
And Hawking was involved with that as well?
They were, it was a, I was told a four to zero vote, so I don't know.
So there's six county commissioners, so obviously two didn't vote at all, I guess.
So the four to zero vote is, was to rescind?
Correct.
Correct.
Authorizing them to go ahead and negotiate the contracts with the City of Athens, and they also currently hold a high university's contract as well, Athens-Hawking Recycling.
I might add that under OERC, it clearly states that the county solid waste management district is a political subdivision worth knowing.
Okay. Any other items?
I know that everybody's been wondering and questioning, we're going to get that single stream?
Well, and we just received this right before the meeting.
I know.
There's a lot of detail here, so I'm not sure, is this coming up?
This RFP was just as an informational item to provide you, that shows what we had put out as a request for proposals, in the attempt to get the best package for the City of Athens.
Agreed.
That incorporated the single stream, the heavy events that we already have under contract, like the move-out, Halloween, you know.
Spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup.
Well, and in bold here, I was particularly, you called it the three, the triple bottom line, the economy, the environment, and the equity, and I thought those were three really important pieces to the contract, equity being imperative that the issue of regional environmental impact be addressed in the RFP, and the successful respondent will supply information regarding downstream outlets and processing efforts engaged with each commodity collected. So I think that's really important. And the economy impact on local jobs, contributions to local community, and long-term investment in the region was well-stated in my opinion.
You know, we have a local landfill, and I don't know if you wanted to speak to that, nor would you.
No, we do have a local landfill within our district. It's a, again, it's a two-county district, because it starts on the board of Nelson, Athens and Hawking County near Nelsonville. The idea is, again, is that the tipping fees are generated by going to the landfill, actually maintaining operations for the solid waste district, and so the generation fee, of course, spill over to the manufacturing or the building of the MRF. So the, this is the idea to bring it in as local as possible, mostly so we have control over as well, we know what we're throwing away.
Well, and I think that's really important, because when you look at the specific details and you talk about construction debris, that's when we, many of us have been schooled in the zero-waste model, and been to those trainings, and that involvement with zero waste, and talking about those kind of things, I think this is really important with some of the specifics of this plan. And I think we have to be very aware in our community of a waste stream and what's accepted, especially with our other development of other issues going on in our county with the injection waste, and also there's landfill waste related to the oil and gas industry that I think is really important, you know, for our local entities to understand what would be welcomed into our community or not.
And for example, the household hazardous waste, we've always contracted with the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District for those, that removal of those services, things that we don't want to, want to wind up in our landfill, as it were. My understanding from the law director is that the contract authority will come once the negotiations have been conducted, and there's a dollar amount, that that's when you'll put forth that. Please be aware, and I know you are painfully, I'm painfully aware, current contract as far as June 30th, so I fully imagine an emergency clause by the time we get to the negotiation requesting so that the trash gets picked up on July 1st.
So we'll need legislation to, we'll need legislation to enter into contract?
No.
No, we already got that.
My understanding from the law director's office is that legislation is, once I have a dollar amount to bring forth, because they don't know what they're approving, they would not have.
Yeah, okay.
Clearly, in one of these, it states you have to have the contract amount, so.
And I think for the broader audience as well, there are mandates set by EPA and different entities that, in our contracts, and those have to be managed, and recycling is a large one, in terms of how much a community correct is allowed to, or should be recycling, mandated to recycle.
And the other thing is, every five years, there's a policy committee that's put together to kind of steer the ship in terms of recycling and trash, and that is, that's coming up sometime next year, I believe. I had a conversation with Roger Vale sometime, usually in the corridor of City Hall here, downstairs in the lobby, and that really requires participation of both the counties and the waste district, requires actually buy-in by, I think, 60% of the population, as well as the major municipalities in both counties. So look forward to putting a team together sometime next year to do that, maybe even later this year, they'll start the formation. I forget when the mandate is to do this, but every five years, you have to review your solid waste policy and see if it's meeting its goals. I know I said in on the last one, I think it was actually initially representing just the citizenry, I think, if it kind of formed into the council side of it.
Was Nancy Bane quite involved in that?
Nancy Bane, Ed Newman were part of it. The way it works, I think, is seven on each side of the county, each county, and then they pick a fifteenth to be the deal, the tiebreaker. And again, it comes down to where, what we want to see in our recycling strategies, and it has to be reviewed and updated every five years. And the criteria is expected change, too. Originally, last time, it's probably more than you want to know, last time was just, we had to provide access to recycle, access to recycling systems for 90% of the population. I think the next criteria will be a certain percentage that has to be actually diverted from the waste stream. I think that's what I've been hearing. And again, it's further down the line, so just be aware of that's coming down as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other items?
Not in the last five minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, what we'll do is move into a very brief special session of council, so it's as if we're starting regular readings, we have two ordinances that we'll be reading tonight. So our first item of business in the special session is to establish a quorum, and we have all council members present, and I would accept, oh, I'm sorry, accept council member Kent Butler. And our clerk of council is not with us tonight, so our next item of business will be to appoint an acting clerk for tonight, and I would entertain a motion, I believe.
Motion.
Michelle?
Michelle.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint council member Michelle Pappy as acting clerk tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, the motion is approved. We have two ordinances tonight. One, the first one is ordinance 5515, and that's an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, and that's introduced by council member Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I first like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 5515.
Second. Second.
Now, the reason for the rule suspension is there are some bills that need to be paid, this ordinance has to get passed.
Okay.
Quick, simple, that's it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to consider this ordinance under suspension of rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, that motion carries.
Um.
And then we are now considering this under suspension of the rules.
I would like to make a motion to accept ordinance 5515.
Second.
This was read last week, it's a rather extensive ordinance on appropriations from various departments, and I think we've hashed it out pretty well, so I would like to have a vote on it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this appropriation ordinance. Any additional comments?
No, it's just the bills as Jeff stated, in particular, of course, is the TC 100s for the community center. If you remember, we discussed that being shorted, and just to make sure we have enough money for the next phase.
And also then $53,000 for our parking garage fund, moving that over to the debt, that's a significant expense for us, too. Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving ordinance 5515, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5715 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and entering to an agreement for the FY 2015-16 Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant and declaring an emergency. That's introduced by council member Patterson. Okay, that's the second reading. We have other business tonight, important business, in that we have the Board of Zoning Appeals and two members who have served faithfully on that appeals committee are due for reappointment, and that is Elizabeth Hallow and Kate Towesley, who serves as an alternate.
Actually, she is not an alternate, she was an alternate, but she's not, she was an, she's actually been bumped up. Right now, the alternate is Beth Soto, I believe it is, and Ed Baum, yeah, Ed Baum. So she's actually just being reappointed as a regular member.
So these are both regular members for the Board of Zoning Appeals? Okay, and do we have?
And they're both are willing to serve.
Do we have a motion to accept their reappointment?
I'm going to reappoint Elizabeth Hallow and Kate Towesley to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Board of Zoning.
Okay, and yes.
I would point out, Betty Hala is the longest-serving member so far on the zoning board of appeals as it stands now, so she has that institutional memory of the zoning board of appeals. She was on, for quite some time before I was on, so it's been at least a good dozen or maybe even 20 years, as far as I know. I should find out, I better find out. She's, she's a good, solid, you know.
Quite a number of years of service, yes. Okay. We have a motion and a second to consider the reappointment of Elizabeth Hallow and Kate Towesley to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it seems like it's unanimous, motion carries, and we extend our thank you to their service to the community substantial. That being said, I'd consider a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So motion.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the meeting is adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you.